Relax?
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 2nd. We're going to be doing more than time. And we will do the third place of the present. And we'll do our work and then, uh, we'll move on.
Thank you very much. We've got the microphone on, so we'll have a little less silence now. If you'll all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. This is the time of the meeting for planning commissioner announcements. Are there any announcements from the commission today?
I do have one. First of all, I want to give a shout out to the Skateboard Museum guys over there, and they're going to be hosting a skateboard jam in Los Sosos on September, I think it's 17, at the Los Sosos Skate Park. And there's going to be 17 and 18, $500 grand prize, and also, a lot of local musicians are going to be playing there. So it's going to be the Central Coast Art and Music Festival.
Very good. Excellent. Sounds like a fun event. No other announcements? Then we will move on to public comment period. This is time for any member of the public to come forward and speak on any subject they would like, so please just give us your name, and we'd love to hear from you.
Good evening, city planners. My name is Rigmore, and this is my grandson, Matias. We cannot stay, so I'm using my minutes now. I do not know if tonight is about homeless help or workforce housing, but I have something I want to say about both. Matias and his parents was part of a Christian fellowship outreach program and moved to live for several years to Hite Ashbury, San Francisco, in the thick of hippie homeless and the drug-addicted community. Their mission was to help needy and down-throated people and to hopefully turn their life around to make better choices. They collected meals and clothing. They took several people in, so they would have a nice place to sleep. They taught them welding and how to repair stuff, et cetera. After years of trial and error, they decided to quit their efforts before they ended up homeless themselves. Matias and his parents received invaluable experiences and learning, but the homeless people remained homeless and the drug-addicted people continued their drug habits. It is not easy to change people's lives, and I do not want my tax dollars to go for a wasted government tryout. Workforce housing, I'm all for. If you can come up with good ideas that does not infringe on private property rights and the codes and rules are not pointless, ridiculous, and unreasonable, that would be great. My house is up the street here, and 11 years ago, I rented the entire upstairs for $250 a month to a single lady who came in to work at the Embarcadero every day on the bus. We were both extremely happy. She was for cheap rent, I for having someone in the house when I was not here. I wanted to get permit for private outside entrance, but forget that. I needed a second parking. That she had no car meant nothing to their rules. Seems crazy to me. Other renters or owners with more than one car and park on the, they park on the street, that is okay. Some people here in Moro Bay who flattens down the city sidewalk right away to make their own private parking area seems to be okay, too. But someone without a car cannot rent because some properties in the past were built without thoughts of extra parking. Well, I will be back when the issues come up regarding vacation rentals, Airbnb, and other rentals. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your service to the community.
Oh, I didn't get your name.
Get it off the microphone.
Yeah. I'm sorry. I, I'm...
I did say it. My name is Rigmore.
Rigmore. Ms. Rigmore. Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, we will, uh, we will close the public comment period and bring it back to the commission. And this evening, we actually do have a presentation regarding Housing Diversity and Options by Ms. Ann Wyatt from Homeless Services Oversight Council of San Luis Obispo. Would you like to, Scott, would you like to say anything by way of introduction, or...
Well, you, um, so we have, we have Ann here. She's, she's come in and spoken to staff a couple of times on, uh, on home sharing, and she's the program coordinator for Home Share Slow. And that's what the, and she's going to provide the presentation like you outlined there for housing diversity options, so.
Very good. Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Teft and Commissioners. Ann Wyatt, I'm program coordinator, as Scott said, for Home Share Slow, a new nonprofit program providing housing in the county. And I am also here, and here tonight, as a member of the HSOC Housing Committee. So this is a presentation here we'll go through on housing options that the HSOC Housing Committee has put together to help encourage a sort of dialogue and more solutions for housing challenges that county residents are facing. So with that, I'll just launch into the presentation here. It, I'll spend about 20 minutes on it, and then I hope you'll have questions, and we'll be able to talk some more about specifics or general ideas here. If it's easier for you to ask questions in the middle or afterwards, I'm comfortable either way. So feel free to interject if, if something's pressing. We put together this, and I hope you can hear me if I face the screen okay. Is this sound okay? Okay, good. So we put together this presentation really for kind of four reasons. We, we wanted, first of all, an educational presentation about the diversity of options ahead of us. We spend a lot of time talking about the challenges and housing challenges make front-page news pretty often, and homeless issues is brought up by the previous speaker. But we really want to look at solutions. It's, it's hard to get mired in challenges, so educate the community on solutions. And along that lines, I'm a housing policy planner, so I spend my life kind of immersed in housing issues and with planners, and I'm surprised by the lack of vocabulary as far as types of housing. So that was another kind of goal here in this presentation, to help encourage a consistent vocabulary. And so we're all kind of talking on the same page when we're talking about solutions and a little better understanding of the challenges. That's a lesser so item here, because I think, at least amongst your members, you're probably pretty familiar with the challenges facing your population, but with other groups, that may be more of an issue. And inspire flexible thinking and creative solutions. And just, just the few bullets of items I think you well know. More than 1,500 homeless persons in the county, and the low vacancy rate, a little under 2%, I think still. These statistics are a little dated, but, and pretty often, we're in the, you know, worst 10 of most unaffordable housing in the country, here in the county. And this, these slides were put together not just to address homeless issues, but housing affordability in general. So that's another important component, that we're not just looking at homeless challenges, but a lot of people on the edge. So a big component of our challenge here, and what I consider kind of a need-to-retool thinking, is changing demographics. What we're seeing is from an old kind of image of the four-person family household, mom, dad, and kid, kid. We're seeing a lot more single-person households, and I probably should have looked for census data on Moro Bay just before I came, but I didn't. But in the county, we're looking at between 1 in 4 and 1 in 3 households is composed of a single person. So if we think about that, that is one of the most significant changes in our housing reality that we're seeing. And so we're seeing an uptick then, still, with more single-person households. So those single-person needs are going to be very different than the family needs. We're seeing millennials, younger people with kind of different trends and interests. Driving less, fewer driver miles are often cited as goals, and owning less, so we're hearing kind of about this sharing society and more interest in access over ownership. So those are things that, words that the sort of younger generations are throwing around that affect housing and housing ownership. So with those changes, we also have a lot of individuals in need for services. It depends on what surveys we hear, but I think I just read 1 in 4 Americans is diagnosed with a mental health issue. I'm not an expert there, but it's, it's a pretty substantial number of Americans with mental health issues, physically challenged as well with an increasingly elderly population. We have more physical challenges and medically fragile, um, people. Then on the younger end, we have transitional-aged youth coming out of foster care that need some special services, and a recovery population that's substantial. So these different populations have special needs, kind of for supportive housing. Along with the special, special populations, we do have some institutional barriers, so not to spend a lot of time on them. The previous speaker spoke to some zoning and code issues that get in the way of what seem like practical solutions. And infrastructure challenges, as you all well know, sewer and water are big ones, and how to provide for new housing and new community members with shortages or infrastructure lacks. NIMBY and neighborhood opposition also challenges as we look at sites for housing and other infrastructure. So moving past kind of the challenges, as I said, the, the purpose of this was to focus on solutions. So we really want to get people thinking creatively about options and diversity of solution. So the, our presentation here is divided up really into two parts, and so the one of most interest to me is the first part, the use of existing resources. And we'll talk then also about new construction. When I find groups thinking about housing solutions, I often find the solutions couched in terms of building new units exclusively. And that's certainly one necessary component of housing solutions, but we do have a lot of existing resources. And so I, I think an important component of solution is focusing on, on the existing resources. So with that, there are kind of soft options. And so like to just speak to three sort of types of use of existing resource that I'm hoping we can get people thinking more about. One is vacant unit acquisition. Another is home shares. And so I sure appreciate the support of the city council here and different organizations within the city on, on the home sharing option. And the third component is repurposing of existing commercial structures. So first of all, vacant units. This picture is probably from Detroit or Cleveland or some Rust Belt town that has a significant number of actually vacant rundown units. But we have a lot of untapped potential here in the county as far as vacant units. Something like 17% of the county housing units, that's around, ooh, I didn't look at statistics right before I came, but something like 20,000 housing units in the county are vacant units. So most of the vacant units are seasonal units, as you have certainly here in Moro Bay, a lot of summer rentals and weekend rentals and people coming for high-season times. But what I'd like to focus on and get more people thinking about is the vacant other category of unit. The census breaks down vacant units into something like six categories. So one of them is the, the most common, seasonal unit. Another is units that are for sale or for rent. They would be vacant for a period of time while these transactions are happening. And then there are a couple other categories. And the category vacant other has been skyrocketing over the last decade. And, and this is some category of units that hasn't really been tracked or noticed until fairly recently. And in the county, we have not quite 2,000 vacant other units. And it's kind of an interesting component, because there hasn't been a lot of research done on why these units are sitting empty. I have a lot of suspicions and could spend hours boring you to death with it, but I'd like to get people to kind of focus on it. Here in Moro Bay, I think you have around 300 or 400 vacant other units. I could be exaggerating. Again, I didn't look at Moro Bay's specific statistics right before I come, came, but it's a substantial number. And we've actually have been able to identify a number of these units through your city water records. And so if we wanted, we could send letters to these property owners and try to make contact and figure out why these units are sitting empty and ask if we couldn't use them for housing. And so that could be a fairly inexpensive way to actually capture whatever that number of vacant other units are that aren't really being used clearly. Most commonly, they're used maybe for storage of goods, or possibly there's a probate going on, or someone moving out and not quite knowing what to do. But with the concerted effort, but after identification, that's a number of units that could be captured for affordable housing with some effort. So another, another source of using the existing housing is home share. And what we see is an increasing number of, as I said, single-family person households, and especially single senior households, and even more so, single women, single senior women. So there are more than 10,000 single senior women in San Luis Obispo County. So it's a good number. And here in the city, I just looked at senior household numbers that I think it was around 1,500 senior households, and of those, want to say 400 or 500 might be women-only households. So it's a substantial number, and these groups have expressed a will to age in place. Our site statistics of almost 90% of seniors want to age in place, but we're seeing challenges with that, of economic challenges. The average social security income for senior women is just over $1,000 a month, and a huge percentage of senior women are basically living on that social security income. So if you take the average rent of an apartment here in Moro Bay, a one-bedroom apartment that might be $1,000 or $1,100, that rent alone is exceeding that social security income. So it's a huge problem for a lot of women. Men, too, but the social security income for men is about $16,000 a year. It's a little higher than for women, so a little less challenged there. But we see the challenge for single women renters trying to live on social security and pay rent, but we also see it for homeowners who might be house-rich here in Moro Bay and around the county, but don't have the income to pay possibly taxes or maintenance, and are also suffering then from some isolation with decreased mobility. So home share looks to kind of hook up seniors, particularly women, who have extra bedrooms, with people looking for affordable housing. So we can basically kind of create housing units from existing units, kind of in the way the previous speaker mentioned, of finding a roommate and sharing the space. And so I think we have a huge potential. A slow village just took a survey of San Luis Obispo County seniors and asked about willingness to home share, and their survey suggested what we would guess, that about 20% of seniors said they'd be willing to consider home sharing if it were a way to age in their homes and stay there. And that fits with statistics from HUD that suggest that about 20% of seniors are actually overhoused, which means they have an extra bedroom. So it's a way to, to capture rooms, and we're excited to start the program. Hopefully, we'll be able to start matching in September, once we sort of overcome some organizational hurdles here. And we already have some potential providers lined up here in Moro Bay, and plenty of seekers looking. So we're really excited about the potential to open up some, some rooms which create affordable units here and around the county. The other sort of existing unit potential is in conversions. And I know your housing element here in Moro Bay does have some language about possibly converting motels outside of the tourist coastal zone, so I would encourage you to kind of keep looking at that. We see motels as de facto housing around the county, especially in the off-season. There are a lot of people renting nightly or week by week who can't find other housing or scrape together first months, last months, and deposit. And what we're doing now in general, I find, is kind of turning a blind eye toward it. But if we recognized motels as housing and bought them as nonprofits or communities and provided adequate community space within the motels, they can actually be a decent or better form of housing, especially for single residents who want to be in central locations and don't have a need for a lot of space. So they can be a very efficient use for singles. So I'd like to get your commission and others thinking in terms of potential for some of the older, less attractive to tourists kind of motels that we have here in stock as they come for sale. So new construction is the other component, and also very important, so hopefully we can do more along those lines. There are a lot of types of housing, so another aspect of, of this is that I see a lot of people kind of fixated on single-family detached housing as the only option. So we put these slides together to get people thinking again on other options that can work very well. So multifamily housing has shared walls. It can look just very much or exactly like single-family housing, but has the shared walls, may have common facilities. It allows more housing units in less space and higher density. Mobile home perks in manufactured housing, he certainly, we're surrounded by it right here, so you're all familiar with it here. It offers ownership opportunities with lower purchase price, since actually the ownership of the housing is bifurcated from the ownership of the land in most parks, has shared facilities. Almost 10% of this, the county housing is actually manufactured or mobile homes. About evenly split, 5% between mobile home parks and 5% on owned land dispersed. And my experience living in mobile home communities is that it can be wonderful, fairly dense and expensive housing with wonderful shared facilities in a lot of cases. Granny units, second units, accessory dwelling units. They're, they're kind of, those terms are interchangeable used and generally similar. So we see both attached units and detached secondary units, and really, they're, they're kind of all categorized by smaller than the main residence, which makes them more or less affordable by design. I don't remember what your Moro Bay allowances are, but often they're limited to a certain size of 650 square feet or some percentage size of the main house. They're, provide rental opportunity in areas that are often owner-occupied, and opportunities for multiple generation and in-home care as people need it. Tiny home communities and organized campgrounds. Are commissioners familiar with Hope's Village, the nonprofit here in the county that's trying to establish a campground? It's been incorporated now and working toward opening a village for maybe 60 people for the last several years, and they're using the model of Dignity Village, which is a campground that was established in Portland in 2000 or 2001 and has been operating since then. It features shared facilities and simple living in community. Often, the individual houses don't have plumbing, but they could, and so often, the plumbing and cooking facilities are kind of in shared, common rooms or outside areas. And Hope's Village has, has a couple of the demo tiny houses. This is actually their original demo, maybe some of you have seen, driving around the county. So they're still working on a site and zoning opportunities of where that could go, but these could take a lot of forms, from RVs or tents to the small structures we kind of see that are now sort of fatty tiny homes. But they could look a lot of different ways, but basically function with common space. Live-work, combined living and workspace. It's still the norm in a lot of places, a sort of tradition of work and home together that we've gotten away from with single-family zoning. And so we still see it in some cottage industries, like artist lofts and bed and breakfasts, but we could see it in other types of small restaurants or hair salons, where people could actually live in the back room. If people have traveled in Asia, it's still the standard to have the family kind of operating the, the small restaurant and living off to the side, and the kids kind of helping. We're probably not going to go all the way back to that here, but we do have some opportunities to kind of mix the space and mix the parking use, cut the costs, and be a little more efficient there if we're creative. And another option that we used to see a lot of, but don't too much now, is the residential hotel, also called boarding house, also called shared living residence or co-living. It's kind of up to sort of six unrelated individuals living together. It's short-term rental housing. It's efficient small units, so this is what the motels could become, also known as SROs, single-room occupancies, often in central locations, and often having the furnishings makes them practical for people moving around and traveling light who don't want to travel with their own furniture. So these are permitted in a lot of zones, but they're, we still don't see a whole lot of them, or they're operating kind of quietly, this kind of co-living. But the, the sort of boarding house is generally sort of six, up to six persons living together. On a larger scale, maybe more than six persons would become a residential hotel, depending on the zoning category. But again, it can be another way for singles to share resource and live together for less. Again, both those needing economic sort of challenges, meeting them, and people who just want to live simply and, and combat isolation. So these can work well for a lot of people, or some, again, some people. Supportive housing and group homes offer supportive services that list up front of residents with special needs. So supportive housing, then, group homes can be a way to also provide for special needs on-site. And finally, independent and assisted living, so housing and services for the aging. So there's sort of a demonstrated shortage here in the county of this type of housing that can be both turn out very expensive to be unaffordable for a lot of citizens or just not available. Cambria, for example, where I'm from, has only a, a couple of small assisted living houses in the six or less fashion, so it's very difficult for Cambrians who want to stay in their communities to be able to stay there and without coming down here. I think Moro Bay's a little better positioned with facilities, but county-wide, there aren't so many to choose from. So leadership in action. We'd really like to get people talking. I'm not going to focus on these slides because it's set up for other community groups. I'm, you are the decision-makers to some degree here in Moro Bay, so having you go off to decision-makers may not be necessary. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I'd love to talk some more about any of these ideas. Thanks. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I'm sure there are going to be questions. Who'd like to start out? Questions, comments?
Do we have public comment on this?
It's a presentation. Yeah.
Right. No decisions here.
It's a presentation.
I got a few questions. I predominantly deal with new construction or remodels and, you know. So, one of the things that I see is, or biggest problems in getting cheaper or low-cost housing is the land cost, you know, regulation costs, and most importantly, you know, workers' compensation costs. So, with, if there's any way that we could get to lower those costs, especially in the workers' comp field, as far as my carpenters, you know, I pay them up to 35% workers' comp cost per wages. So, with the new, you know, Affordable Healthcare Acts or single payer, if workers' comp could be rolled into the, the, the single payer option in, for health insurance, that would cut down costs considerably. And I don't hear anybody talking about that at all.
Yeah, an interesting idea there because I know workers' comp is a huge problem from my own experience too, a real challenge. Well, that's interesting. So, nobody's thrown that out there at all?
No, I haven't heard it at all. And as far as roofers, roofers pay almost 100% for workers' comp. So, you know, it's a huge, it's a huge factor in, in building, you know, in building anything. But it, as you try to drive the costs down, it makes it, it's more and more important to, to reduce those costs.
Well, I didn't hear you advocating for a single payer healthcare, did I? Yes, yeah, oh, or I don't know what I heard.
It's above our pay. It's above our pay, right?
It's something that should be talked about, yes. So, I made a note. I mean, that's something I think we all should be looking kind of up, up the channels as something that we need to deal with. It's a hurdle. An article in the Washington Post in the last days about affordability of housing did talk, I mean, speak to some of this. Just even, it was an interesting, an analysis done recently suggests that so many of the population is living on such a tight budget that even with free land and free construction, just the cost of maintaining the housing for some nonprofit would be more than extremely low-income residents could pay. It was kind of a sobering calculation as far as what we're facing, that even with all that free, no building and construction costs, just the maintenance would be, be a challenge. And that's the point here, I guess, that we need to think bigger creatively. So, so I guess that's our point here, that even with that being free, we're still going to struggle to, to make it and, and thinking sort of outside the new construction box of how we can work better with what we have. Oops, did I already say that a few times? Are there any other questions I can answer or?
I, I don't know if question or comment, but, you know, we, like recently, we did approve the track and they said, oh, we'll promise affordable housing. And, you know, a lot of times, the, that promise of affordable housing kind of like changes and morphs and then it kind of disappears, you know? And I think that maybe a tighter control of if you get, because see, what I look at is like, a lot of times, we'll allow something in a residential area or high-density, which really, really burdens the infrastructure more, you know, like a granny unit or whatever. But, you know, it brings the infrastructure more with the sewer and with the water. But if it, on the premise that it's, okay, it's a, it's a social benefit, okay? And a lot of times, it kind of gets slipped through the, slipped through the cracks, you know? And, and then the other thing is, is I have a friend of mine who's a social worker in the county. And, you know, it's, it has come to my attention that a lot of these recovery homes aren't even licensed. And when they get into a neighborhood, you have a situation where it's a health and safety issue, not only for the neighborhood, but for the people that are living there, okay? This, recently, they have, they were bombing the, the, for pests, you know, for bedbugs and stuff, in a room closed off while the, while the women are living there. This is not, this is not, not a good situation. And I think that we need to have a little more awareness because there's a stigma. You know, we, in the United States, that the, the big problem is that the disparity of wealth has occurred. And now, we have a situation where, well, people say, oh, it's not in our neighborhoods, but we have homeless people, we have people that are going through recovery, we have elderly by themselves. And we need to kind of, you know, instead of just keep increasing police budgets or, you know, just the judicial system, being part of the judicial system cost, we need to kind of incorporate, you know, and address the, address the symptom and not like, you know, at the core. And I think that's kind of what your organization is doing. And the solutions, you're right, have to be really outside, outside the box. And what some of them could be is like, you know, we have a parking, you know, dealing with parking, for instance, here, it's a, you know, a big issue with parking. And I, I just think it's, a lot of it has to, the people, it's an education and outreach thing where people can kind of like bring in and, and get the empathy of the people to understand a little bit more of, of, instead of just painting a certain people with a certain brush. It's a, it's a, it's a social issue. And it needs outreach, it needs education, it needs understanding. And then, we could start bringing in some solutions. Some of the, some of the solutions that you mentioned are like wonderful, that Hope, I haven't, I haven't heard of it, but, you know, that Hope Village. These are the kind of things that kind of like better in taking people and making them, instead of a burden to society, ah, they could be benefits to society, you know? And, and, you know, and there's a lot of people that are like, you know, you see homeless and stuff. And a lot of them I see and they're peacekeepers. They're not troublemakers, they're peacekeepers, you know, they, you know, but they're still a problem. So, it's kind of, it's a, it's a challenge for sure.
With, with respect to new construction designated low cost, how do, how do you, how do they typically maintain that, that low-cost status during a resale? I mean, somebody, somebody's allowed to buy in with some sort of guaranteed loan or something, but subsequent sales, is it?
It's deed restricted.
Deed restricted, so.
Typically for 30 or 50 years.
But if it's for-sale housing, then that can be a little tricky or very, on the for-sale housing.
It's not. It actually works just fine. It's recorded against the title.
Does it become a, a percentage of the market value that would normally be attributed? I'm just kind of curious how it.
It locks into the income levels that are established to the county.
Oh.
Yeah. So, yeah, you have income levels, you have, and then you have, if it's rent, you have rents that can be charged associated with the different income levels, you know, low, very low, moderate, those types of things. And then it's, or if you have sale prices, same thing for, depending on what they're deed restricted to. Typically, we'll deed restrict them to a certain level, though it could be, again, moderate, low, very low type of thing.
So, it becomes a, more often, a function of the, of the applicant's income rather than anything to do with market prices in the, in the area and things like that?
Typically, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And then a lot of times you'll pause and then require them to be qualified with the city or through, say, like a, you know, third-party nonprofit, you know, something like that. So, it depends on how it's worked out. You know, we, in the city typically, the ones that be bad are, are qualified with third-party companies. Just because we don't have a housing coordinator type of thing.
Is Peoples doing your, your, or Haslam, or who's doing it?
Yeah. Peoples does it for a lot of them, yeah.
Is doing your qualifying.
I have, I have one other question. Imagine we're focusing on getting builders, private enterprise, to sort of incentivize them to do these things because, simply because there's more of them rather than foundations or certainly government. At least, that would be, that would be my approach. But it strikes me that it's, it might be sort of a chicken or the egg proposition. I would imagine that the builders, you know, want some sort of easing of density and height restrictions and square footage and things like that. But probably the municipalities are sort of reluctant to do those things until builders actually come forward to request it. And I'm kind of wondering how, how you get this synergy going that makes sense for one or both of them to start participating.
Well, yeah, I think that is a challenge. So, I don't have the solutions there as, as far as new construction, even with the incentives of density bonuses and other incentive that the state requires the city and the counties to, to implement, you know, it's still a challenge to make the numbers work with the high costs of land here and the regulatory fees. And how those get dealt with is still a huge question. And the insurance issue, like, like Commissioner Lehrer talked about, it's, it's hard to make all that come together for building. So, I don't, I'm, my, that's just why we need to kind of look in the other category because I think it's only going to get more challenging, that we're not going to find any of these solutions to that soon.
So, so some of the, some of the notes I'm making here and then I'm going to put on the board in my office to include in the general plan, LCP update and zoning code update are to make sure we're accounting for housing types that Ann's talking about. I think that's important. I think our zoning code now doesn't do that. And I think it's probably a worthwhile conversation and to make sure that we're not unnecessarily prohibiting these types of things by the way our zoning codes are written. So, you can do some of these other types of things. So, it's clear, because right now, these things aren't even discussed, a lot of these types of housing options aren't discussed in our zoning code. So, it then sort of becomes up to me or you to decide whether we want them or not. It'd be better to have them written black and white so everybody knows what we can do and can't do. So, those are ways that you deal with them and, and some of the things that will be coming out of the, the ongoing update process.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
I just wanted to say that I appreciate what you're doing. It's important to keep it real. We don't, we kind of live in a fantasy world of the way people live and we're not in a major urban area to see the way, the numbers of people who are living on the street these days. You know, I was down in Los Angeles earlier this year and went through the homeless encampment. And, and it's block after block after block. And these realities are seeping in here, whether it's the homeless that live in our creek beds in slow or out this way. And this idea of having alternate types of housing, I mean, coming from the east, the idea of manufactured housing is always in a very derogatory, seen as very derogatory. But people that are retirees from Cal Poly with doctoral degrees are living in our, in our manufactured home communities in La Sosa and in the, some of the areas of Cambria and, or Cayucos and here. And, and some of these are very dense and it's, it's not, it's not the quantity of space, it's the quality of space. And the idea that, the thing that always gets me are these dead zones that we have. We have horrible problem areas in some of our commercial areas. We have a school here that sits largely unused. The ingenuity of our, of our faith communities and their ability to mobilize and become activists and things like this. I think there's a lot of pieces here. I just think for a lot of folks, the reality hasn't hit that this is what the reality is. You know, knowing students at Cal Poly that they live in their cars, you know, that the ability to get people to come here as faculty is, is very difficult because of those vacancy issues that you talked about there. Everything is rented. So, this idea of being very flexible, we've had discussions here from the community about things that sort of drop in, like Wizard of Oz houses in the middle of other areas. You know, this idea of the, finding the right way to place things such that they're less disruption and also take advantage of transit routes and things like that. When people don't have cars, you can't put them out just anywhere. You have to put them somewhere where they've got capacity for transit. So, I think, you know, I completely agree with Scott. We have to be very mindful of the types, typologies that are out there and make sure we're not exclusionary where we could take advantage of certain situations that we know are problems now in some of our periphery zones to some of our commercial. We've had people come forward here and turn commercial real estate into basically residential real estate in here for profit. And so, that issue's already out there as something that, that people are trying to take advantage of. But I just appreciate what you're doing because it's, it's very easy to not, these are, these are very easy things to not see. And, and so, you're making them visible is very important. Thanks.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to discuss it because it, because that's very much what had been my experience. And as, as Scott brings you some of these options to think about and consider, I would just throw out a few notes. And what you're going to see is it's a few units at a time. So, it's very much incremental. That's the challenge of this and the beauty. Home sharing, we will be matching one, you know, single senior woman at a time. And it's quite labor-intensive and what works for one woman and her match won't work for another one. So, so it is tedious in that respect. It won't be big solutions fast. Otherwise, I might just encourage you to look at kind of three challenges. You're going to have, I mean, instead of trying to regulate the use or be limited or exclusive, really, my experience with higher-density housing has been kind of three main challenges. There's been smoke, noise and parking. And, and really, if you kind of think about those challenges of how you overcome those and rather than saying no to the home share or whatever, maybe there's a way if you can't park onsite to pitch into an off-site space or, or something. But kind of looking at those actual challenges rather than, than saying no to the use. And, and I know it's tricky, the, the previous speaker was here with one roommate with no car, but if you open that up, her next roommate might have two cars and, and so it is kind of tricky varying use. But it's really kind of important to stay, stay focused on those actual kind of challenges rather than just, just denying or not thinking bigger.
I have a, I have a couple of questions, Ann. With regard to existing housing resources, I guess my question is, what's happened? You know, because the, the sorts of things that you're talking about are all very traditional ways that people have been housed. I mean, we probably all had roommates when we were in college. And so, the idea of roommates has been around for a long time in terms of the residential hotels, boarding houses are, you know, a very traditional way that particularly young, single people lived. And in terms of the mixed use, I don't know, those of you who are old enough to remember a western called Gunsmoke will recall that Miss Kitty rented rooms above the saloon. So, you know, I guess the question is, how, how have these fallen into disfavor or into disuse or how have we gotten away from these sort of very traditional ways of housing people?
Well, Chair Teft, thank you for asking because I've spent the last seven years kind of looking into this sort of similar question as I've done research and lived in many of these different types of housing that I talk about, doing experiential research and kind of myself wondering that same question of this evolution of exactly what you're saying, what has been traditional becoming kind of scary and unknown foreign. And especially more than anything in the case of residential hotels, as you bring up the boarding house, the residential hotel, it's estimated that as many as 15, as much as 15% of the American population lived in boarding houses back in the day around the night, early 1900s. It was a huge percentage of the American population, but it's kind of slipped into the decline. And Ben, if it's on anybody's radar screen at all, is kind of a place for prostitutes and the derelict. So, it's kind of. So it's kind of interesting how what was traditional has been evolved to either a scary thing or something nobody even realizes is there. And I would, this is my take on things, I'm not speaking for the group now, I'm speaking as a housing policy planner, having done research for a lot of years, that there's a marketing pitch to kind of make us want to consume more. And some of these simpler, less expensive, less consumptive types of living have gone by the wayside because we've been sold into the notion that more is better. And to the degree we're implicit in this or, you know, it's all a marketing pitch outside of us, we could spend a lot of fun times on that, maybe later over a drink or something. But it's an interesting question, yeah. And these are, thank you, very traditional forms of housing but have gone kind of by the wayside and become really frightening to people if on the radar screen at all. And they have worked in the past for a lot of people well and can work again.
I've got a comment for that Commissioner Teft. I've had personal experience in SROs. In fact, even, a lot of them went away because of urban redevelopment, downtown redevelopment such as the Gaslamp District in San Diego. It took, basically put a mall where there were 15,000 SROs. And the redevelopment down there has gentrified that space and so these SROs were then torn down or reconverted into lofts and condominiums. I worked with the company that would take hotels out of bankruptcy and put them back, bring them up to present day, you know, standards and put them back on the market. We've worked locally on some and you had the SROs, especially the SRO hotels, being converted to en suite. And you used to have one bathroom on a floor, but then they would combine the rooms and convert them into en suites where you'd have a bathroom and maybe a, you know, a sitting room in each hotel room for rental. Now, part of that is because they were worth so much more, it was economically viable to do that. So how do we incentivize the marketplace or the building codes to allow the construction of more of these SROs, especially in the downtown mixed use areas where essentially they work the best, where they're close to facilities and they're close to, you know, close to the street life and they can integrate into the society a lot more than into the residential areas. So we're upgrading our general plan. How do we incentivize our general plan for our mixed use element in our downtown area so that we could, that these places could be recreated in a present or in a new form that would work in today's marketplace? That's a question.
Well, I'd love to join in that conversation with you, not being familiar enough with your housing element and general plan. I couldn't immediately answer that because I'm not sure what's on your books right now. But part of it is allowing the mixed use and the housing back in. We've had the attitude for so long that housing should be separate from all commercial that I would argue we do need to come back around. And conventional wisdom is coming back around as we see we've separated to our detriment and that mixing of uses can be a good thing with lessening of parking and liveliness of downtowns. I just called about one of your commercial spaces recently that's sitting on Main Street empty that I thought, you know, nobody appears to have rented for a long time. And wouldn't this make a very comfortable kind of small residence for somebody? So allowing the commercial to shift back to residential that's there would be huge. Right now it's difficult, a lot of your commercial serving zones that maybe motels are in don't actually allow residential. So as you look at updating your plan, that'll be key, is allowing residential back into the commercial zones and tourist serving zones. Right now I don't believe it does, so you'll need some kind of zone change or allowance for that. And that's why the housing or the residences in the motels are just kind of, you know, people look aside. And often people living there have to move out or move around every 28 days or something. And so there are bigger issues with tenant laws there that are getting kind of sidestepped. But allowing the residential use will be huge in the commercial zones as you go along updating the plans.
Moro Bay is a little unique in that we have a residential overlay on almost all of our commercial zones.
So it is there already?
It's a little different, yeah. We have a little different issue here in Moro Bay. I guess our issue is almost the opposite, that areas that really ought to be developed commercially are sometimes being developed residentially and certainly not for affordable housing, I might add.
And that's just going back to your comment about the residential hotels and how to build those. It really is a challenge because, right, we know this, there's more money in the bigger, more expensive stuff. It covers the fees and the costs more. So it will require some real concerted will and effort and subsidy to get people to build the lesser expensive stuff because there's just less profit in it. And that's back to your question of why we don't see this anymore, because that basic practical stuff with shared facilities that was affordable provided kind of less profit to build and create. And I don't know how we rethink that model and we're not going to force it to change, but it's going to take some serious incentive to do differently. And again, as far as new construction, it's just going to be tricky because it is expensive to build new. So that's why looking at these resources we have, the existing commercial that's funky and the older motels that tourists aren't flocking to as options to use.
I'd like to, I would like to also comment a little bit about the use of the word NIMBY, which I kind of object to because I hear it as being, I hear it often used in a pejorative manner. And I think that, I think a better term would be neighborhood compatibility. I think in order to succeed with some of these ideas, we have to pay attention to how do we allow them to integrate into the neighborhood that surrounds them. And we do have to pay attention to that interface. So I'm not saying that, I'm not saying, I mean, there probably are certain areas where things should be zoned and things shouldn't be zoned, I'm not prepared to deal with that right now. But in order to expand the areas and where some of these creative uses are allowed, I think we have to look and say, okay, how can we make, how can we make this fit with the existing neighborhoods? I think if we don't do that, we're setting ourselves up for failure if we simply say, plunk it in there, deal with it kind of thing. It's not a good long-term strategy to make this effort succeed.
So noted. It's an important point. That line is fine between people protecting their neighborhood and the community needs for services. So I appreciate that.
One of the challenges we do have here in Moro Bay in terms of affordability of housing, and we see this going on continually, is that some of the most affordable housing in Moro Bay is, are older housing. It tends to be smaller, it tends to be less luxurious, you know, and therefore somewhat less expensive. It's not low-income housing by any means, but it may be starter houses for young families. And we're continuing to see these smaller, older homes being either replaced or remodeled beyond recognition to, you know, we're seeing a 900 square foot house replaced by a 3,500 square foot house or 2,500 square foot house. So I think one of the issues, one of the issues to consider also is how do you preserve, not only how do you create new affordable housing, but how do you preserve your existing relatively affordable housing stock? And I think that's something we're going to have to try and struggle with here in terms of our zoning governance. And the other thing I think we have to look at, you know, as planners and yourself as an advocate, is the issue of scalability. In other words, Moro Bay has very little vacant land left. Some of these, some of these ideas take larger parcels. You know, some of these ideas would be, a residential hotel would be very hard to pull off on a 5,000 square foot lot, you know, or even more so a 3,000 square foot lot, which is what we have a lot of here in Moro Bay. So I think that, I think that as we look, as we look for ideas to provide for affordable housing, we have to look not only in terms of what can be done with scale, you know, tiny home communities and that sort of thing, but what can be done on a single lot, you know, because that's oftentimes the challenge for existing communities like Moro Bay.
Understood, yes. And so as a group, we're countywide, so we put together this slideshow getting people to think about all the options, but wanting policymakers then at the individual, at the community level to think about which of these options may work for their community needs. What may work for you here in Moro Bay may be quite different than Atascadero or San Luis City or the rural county. And so these would be not ideas we would think could apply everywhere, but that people might pick and choose or think creatively. And along the lines of like the residential hotels, so I would advocate, yes, building a new one that's going to be affordable is going to be really hard, but last time I looked, you do have an older motel or did have at least one here for sale in Moro Bay that could be captured by some nonprofit group and operated with very little conversion. So that would be just the kind of looking that I do with the existing resource, that it may not take too much conversion effort to make something that's already there work.
And just one other, just one other point. When you talk about affordable housing, you're talking about an equation that has two lines, two sides to it, okay? One, you're talking about how much this housing costs and second, you're talking about is how much money do people have? So I think part of this whole affordable housing debate is the question of are incomes are locally keeping up with the inflation in housing costs and how can that be addressed as well?
Understood and agreed, you know, that sort of effective demand issue is huge. It's sort of outside of my purview. So agreed, that's an issue and another way of kind of looking at a solution would be increasing effective demand.
You had in my mind. Yeah, that's, I have friends that are, you know, professionals, first responders and having to move out and being required to live within 20, 30 minutes because you're a first responder but can't afford. So these are challenges and it's, you know, it's people like you, bring it, bring it aware, you know, bring it to the public's eye and make it, make people talk about it.
I had a call from one of your, Moro Bay's finest first responders interested in home sharing. So another story in Cambria is last I knew, not a single one of the firefighters lived in Cambria any longer, high housing costs. So it's a huge issue.
Joe?
I just remembered something. I was reading not long ago, I believe it's in New York City, that shortly a project will go online and available and it's multi-stories, I don't know, 10, 12 stories. But they're building apartments, single residents, 250, 300 square feet and the rents will still be 2,500 or 3,000. But God knows, you know, what the ground cost in wherever it was in Brooklyn or Manhattan. But my point is, something on a smaller version of that with smaller land cost and lesser construction costs, you know, might work in an urban environment like San Luis Obispo. But I doubt if anybody's thinking about it because the first reaction is, well, it can't possibly work. But it did work in New York and those proportions might be transferable, you know?
I would argue yes. And that's so, what we're seeing there are micro-units and actually a kind of term we should throw into this slideshow, it's sort of micro-unit getting thrown around or a tiny, tiny house or tiny unit. And there's no exact definition, but often these places are under 500 square feet. And yes, some of these newer ones in New York are the 250 square foot studios that we're seeing going up all over. And my experience as a single person, I've been happy in a room as little as 10 by 7 with nice ventilation and light and shared, then shared bathroom and kitchen facility in a beautiful downtown setting, that even as little as 70 square feet was adequate as a single person. So we can do a lot more with space, looking at other amenities, as one of you commissioners said, that it's not just square footage, but there's a lot of amenity that isn't considered with lighting and view and common spaces that not everybody needs to have for themselves. And in fact, as more single living people, having some of these public shared spaces can bring benefit as much as or more than detriment. Certainly, you know, there are costs and opportunities. And these other options aren't for everybody all the time. So I wouldn't come here and suggest that you and you and anybody left in the audience, you know, needs to share a house or get a roommate. But if you're a senior struggling to pay your bills and to get out and see people, you know, there's a huge opportunity there and there are 10,000 of these sort of single women in the county. Now again, not all of them are struggling economically or socially, but we know a good fraction of them. If everybody inventories people they know, I would be willing to bet you would all come up with at least a handful of such friends and family members struggling with these issues. And so statistics suggest that 80% of Americans are pretty happy with their housing and they want what I call kind of standard conventional housing, the single-family home with a couple bedrooms and a couple baths and a garage. But that leaves, what the statistics show, what is focused on is that most Americans want this, conventional housing. What is sort of neglected is the 20% of Americans who want something else comprise something like 60 million Americans. You know, it's not a small number of people with other needs. And so even though 80%, you know, if 80% are fine and comfortable in their housing, that's great, but the remaining 20% is 20 million, excuse me, 60 million Americans. It's a substantial number kind of wanting something else. And this is beyond really the scope of our short conversation, but some of them want substandard housing, which is something, you know, as a group member and representative of a nonprofit, I can't get into. But a lot of people choose substandard housing too. So that's another issue kind of out there that I'd love to have more conversation about but isn't in sort of this, you know, packaged presentation.
Which brings me to one other comment because while I'm a homeowner here in Moro Bay, I recently had to sort of get out of my comfort zone and find something modest while our home was being remodeled. And we cast a very wide net, Moro Bay and Royal Grande and the other communities around here. And we found a very modest studio apartment. And when we approached one Saturday, there were 15 people in line. And when we got to the front of the line, there were another dozen people behind us. And this was Saturday and they were going to continue it the next day. And I actually never actually heard from the landlord despite the fact that I had hinted that I would double the security and pay three or four months in advance and all those sorts of things. So it's, it's pretty chronic here, it really is.
And that's where it's also important to note in the conversation, often it gets kind of brought to the level of homeless persons actually living on the streets. And of course, there's a huge challenge there of 1,500 something in the county, but it's a bigger challenge, right, for people who are, we would consider kind of probably relatively comfortable sort of of normal friends of ours who are right on the edge. And it's just the one paycheck or the one rent increase from their landlord. I'm getting so many calls from people whose rent's increasing with the increasing sewer costs in Osos and water costs here, that landlords who've been offering kind of sweet deals to tenants for a long time are seeing some increased costs and kind of ready to pass those on to their tenants along with the market sort of rate increases. And tenants are getting hit with huge increases who've had relatively sweet deals for a while and are really struggling now to kind of come up to that, who've been fine. Today I talked to a school nurse, a single mom who makes a pretty good wage as an RN, but she's struggling to find something for her and her son when she just got a big rent increase. And if she stayed in her house, it would take two-thirds of her income to- And if she stayed in her house, it would take 2/3 of her income to stay there. So now she's scrambling to potentially share a house or looking at her options so that she still has some income left for other necessities. Yeah, oh my. I thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here. I hope to join in your conversations as your general plan gets updated and you look at some kind of creative ways to be able to incorporate some of these solutions for people. And Home Share Slow is getting ready to start up next month. We really appreciate the support of Scott and your city council members, so I hope you'll pass on your appreciation there. And if you know some people who may be interested, especially in providing extra rooms, that's our first priority, is to kind of find the providers. Once we put out the word that we're opening up to seekers, I'm betting that we'll get at least 300 kind of seekers in the first day. So finding people needing rooms won't be hard, but the challenge is to kind of create the units, to find people who have the room and are willing to kind of step out of their comfort zone to share that with somebody else.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very educational and a lot to think about. So we'll move on, sorry.
I just wanted to add something to her presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just really quick. Tina Metzger, Moro Bay. I do believe there is an ordinance on the books here in Moro Bay that motel rooms that, and hotel rooms that have kitchenettes can be rented as SROs for more than 28 days at a time. I know there was that limitation back until probably 1990. And the reason why I know is I worked for People Self-Help Housing around 1990, somewhere in there. And I was responsible for the Motel Hotel Study for the City of Moro Bay as an employee of People Self-Help Housing. I think it was a CDBG planning grant. And at the time, new hotels were being built in the City of Moro Bay. What was happening, the rooms couldn't be filled. There was an overbuild of units, hotel rooms. And so the, some of the owners of the older motels that had kitchenettes in them asked if they could rent for longer than 28 days, the limit for a hotel or motel. And so anyway, long story short, People Self-Help Housing got this planning grant and I did it. And I wrote an ordinance that allowed those hotels that wanted to rent for a longer period of time that had kitchenettes, so someone could cook and have a refrigerator and had a little stove and a sink, kitchen sink, in addition to, of course, the room and the shower and the bathroom, that they could rent to people, workforce, be used as workforce housing. So Scott, is that still on the books?
Tina, I'm sorry, I'm not sure. But I'm going to go look now.
Yeah.
I don't, it doesn't sound familiar to me, but I've only been here for two years and I might not have come across it, so.
Yeah, I know for sure, I've known people that have lived in, like, one of these SROs at a motel here in Moro Bay. And they just loved it. They lived there, it was a temporary situation where they were in the doghouse in their marriage or whatever, you know? And so anyway, that is an option. Now, maybe there is such a huge demand for even the older motel rooms with these kitchenettes that the motel owner doesn't feel compelled to rent on a monthly basis. But anyway, I do believe it should be still on the books, but it was an effort to create more affordable housing for single people that needed just, you know, really a studio apartment.
Thanks for bringing that forward. I'm going to go check it out. Thank you.
Yeah, there's all competing interests here. You know, if that were to come through today, I wonder what the Coastal Commission would say in terms of access and, you know.
That would be, yeah. It would probably depend more along the lines of where it's located. If it's, you know, located out of, you know, if it's not in one of the CVS, commercial visitor serving zones and it's elsewhere, if several motels that aren't in that zone, it might be more palatable.
Right.
So, but I don't know. I'm going to go check it out, though. I am interested.
Good. You'll let us know, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. So moving on then to the consent calendar, we have items A1, the current advanced planning and processing list, and item A2, minutes from the meeting of June 21st of this year. Are there any issues or comments or corrections?
Yeah, Scott, on item number 14 on the planning list, it's the 530, I've got to get my glasses now. Let's see, 530 Moro Avenue. I think we had moved, if memory serves, I think that was up the list a little higher and it's moved around. But is that, was that a condo at first and now it's going to be a big residence or what?
Number 14.
On page three.
I think what they've done, my recollection is on this that they, again, they changed the development application with us. I think there's, we're expecting to get some more additional materials from them. And beyond that, I'm not exactly sure where it was. I haven't talked, I haven't spoken with Joan about this for a while, so.
Okay.
I mean, it's been months, really. And I know it was going to be something different one time and they couldn't make that work. And then they came back with some kind of a house design for a while. And I don't know where it's sitting right now. I think they're, I think it may actually be, contrary to what it says here, I think it may actually be sitting back in their lap and waiting for them to respond.
Okay.
I'd have to ask Joan, though.
Yeah, sorry.
Off the top of my head, I don't know.
Well, I should have checked with you earlier, but I kind of noticed it. But anyway, and then, and then that, and then just the other thing was, and I wasn't sure, oh, they were supposed to be, like, a while back, there was going to promise some more trash receptacles downtown and on the Barcadero. Do you recall any of that discussion? If, maybe check with Rob, I guess. I guess I could have checked with him on Warfack. But anyway, more trash receptacles and things. There was discussion that they were going to increase it and it hasn't happened.
Okay.
That's all.
Any other questions or corrections? Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Make a motion to approve consent calendar A1 and A2.
Second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. We have no public hearings tonight. We have no new business. We have no unfinished, we are a tidy group tonight. So it brings us down to item E, which is planning commissioner comments. Okay. Then we will move along to item F, which is comments from the community development director and perhaps a short slideshow of his vacation. We don't.
I'm sorry, I didn't, again, I didn't bring pictures, I apologize. Most of the fish I caught were small, so.
All the big fish are here.
That's right, that's right. I do have one, I guess I do have one thing. It looks like I will, had I not been on vacation and whatever, I probably would have brought it to this meeting since we lost the item that was going to be on here. But I think we're going to bring the measure D discussion for the next meeting. We have one other item, so it's good. And like I said, had I had a little more time and not had a planning commission and general plan advisory committee meeting the week the staff report would have been due, I probably would have had you do it this time. But we're going to bring it to the next one. So. Other than that, that's about all I got.
Very good. August 9th, August 9th is the joint meeting.
That's a good point, yeah. We have a joint planning, planning and city council meeting. And it's a special meeting, so it starts at 4:00.
Right.
And it'll probably take about an hour and a half-ish, maybe a little bit longer. And it's really an update of the status of the general plan and where we're at, kind of 10,000-foot level discussion and presentation by Michael Baker International on where we're at, what we've been doing and where we're going.
And that is next week? Yeah, that is next week, next Tuesday. Very good. Okay. And with that, then, we will adjourn to our next regular meeting, which will be here at the Veterans Memorial Building on August the 16th at our usual time, 6 o'clock.